You need to give him four hours of overtime, otherwise, or we need to do that for hours.
I didn't realize that.
I don't know, I just thought it's. Yeah, so I wonder, I wonder if he's like. Twenty hours of vacation, I would guess that it's just Sarah had twenty hours of vacation. So if that's the case, I'll let you look at the O R F. But you don't do anything else.
So what a motor thing.
No.
Okay. Oh, really? So like, do we have to pay for that?
Just like you know.
So is that something they do straight up and fix then?
Or bring you another?
They had a two cylinder.
Oh, yeah.
Look at us, Jason.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There we go, we're gonna figure this out too. See, isn't it fun?
Well, that's all I was gonna tell her. Hey, they had here stays that week, so they're busy with that. So I didn't write her back, I just.
Evening, everyone, welcome to the municipal city council. Second meeting in the month of July, and on the call order, I'd like to ask if there are any agenda changes or if we approved the agenda.
Real quick, the Cole Library report that we received from Grace was not contained in the packet, but, or was contained in the packet, but not in the agenda.
Oh, gotcha.
So I don't know if that needs to be raised up?
Ah, wait, it is raised up. We can. It's just for the record, so.
I'm gonna assume that's a movement, I'll second that with the amendment.
So we've got approval of the champion with one adjustment, and if you're ready to vote on that, all of them are approving the agenda, as for exceptions, please say aye.
Aye.
The forward. Motion carries. Next time, this communication section, if you wish to address the city council on subjects pertaining to today's meeting agenda, you've got the agendas from the back of the room, so you know where you're at. If you wish to address the council on items not on the agenda, just approach the microphone now, identify yourself, and name an address, and you've got five minutes to make your case. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Jewell, and I'm a two seventeen, first Avenue Northwest for my residence, and then one seventeen and one seventeen and a half, First Street for my property ownership, so dual. Um, I just have a question, just kind of a dual question for the council, kind of, it's about signage, but not what you think it's about, I don't have a problem with the signs. My question is just kind of an overall question about, I've gone over the sign regulations, and I just have a couple of questions pertaining to prohibited signage in Mount Vernon. Most of it is the portable signs, I'm thinking sandwich boards and things like that. Technically, they are prohibited in the downtown area, and I haven't been told that I have to remove them, but I wanna make sure that I'm following the rules, and it says that they're prohibited, so I, I just have a question about that, as to why they are prohibited, and if that's changed. And also about the different kinds of signage that pertains to also a little bit of the Historic Preservation Commission, kind of ties in, like I said, it's a dual question. So I've noticed that there is kind of a difference in some of the signage throughout downtown Mount Vernon, as in there are some prohibited signage that are currently taking residence. In, in Mount Vernon, there's some abandoned signage and stuff like that in downtown Mount Vernon that have not been addressed, but yet it feels like there are other signage that, like, I can't get a bigger sign than seventeen square foot on my building, which is understandable, but I've noticed that there's other places in Mount Vernon who have larger than the allotted signage for their building. Um, so I just kind of had a question as to, seems a little, I know it says to provide fair and equal treatment for all sign users, so I just wanna make sure that everyone's being treated fair and equally, sorry, really nervous. So also with that, I also kind of had a question as to the Historical Preservation Commission, and kind of what their limitations or kind of their scope of power. I've read also their kind of minutes, and I just kind of, I'm also working with the grant to hopefully get the city to work with the building facades, and I just, I've talked to multiple business owners and local residents who feel like sometimes the Historical Preservation Commission's scope may be a little bit too big. They feel like they can't get anything done because they have to jump through all of these hoops, and I'm just worried that if we go through all of these hoops to work through the, to work with the building owners and everything like that, that it's going to add, you know, extra, extra steps to go for. So that's kind of, those are just kind of my questions, so, or just thoughts, comments, concerns, so, yes.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And if you knew how in all of this order we've been, you wouldn't have heard us at all.
Oh, yeah, it's public speaking and camera.
But we follow Nathan's postings, and so, have lots of dog.
Thank you, Jen, your comments appropriate, open comment like this, it's not for a lot of discussion debate.
Yes.
Your point is made, I think, and I think we have avenues, whether it's with Historic Preservation, but I think we need to Saturday.
Yeah, if I can, real quickly.
Okay, please.
As far as the sandwich board signage, the reason they're not allowed is because they're, they're considered offsite and they're technically billboards, so they're not allowed because of that. However, as long as they're not blocking the sidewalk, and the city doesn't receive any complaints, we haven't gotten too excited. The reason for that, by the time I go through the process of issuing you a citation and going to court, the remedy is for you to pick it up and move it inside. So we've just followed up with the individual business owners typically when that happens. As to the Historic Preservation Commission, their authority is quite wide. Once a district is established or the residence is in a historic or considered historic place, they have quite a bit of authority and review, so. And then, your last question, normally we, so the courts don't view us as singling out or retaliating towards a business, we will typically work on a complaint basis, so. Some of the signage, if we can catch it when it's happening, we'll do it then, just because they probably didn't get a permit at the time, but otherwise, we work the scenario backwards. And to be honest with you, when we go through the municipal infraction process, it takes in the air for three to six months. So it could be in the process, it could be at the attorney's for review.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Point is very valid. Anybody else here to speak over communications, part of the meeting? If that will move to the consent.
Well, I just wanted to make one other point, and not in an answer to your questions in any way, but the program that you mentioned, working with the uptown area, is on the agenda later as part of the conversation, and so there can be further discussion as far as that goes.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching that. I think we are then to the consent agenda item, where we have one approval for a city council meeting, minutes, so, thank you, Paul, for a second.
Second.
I'll take marking that one, we'll catch you, Craig. Move the second to approve, July seventh, council meeting, minutes, and if there's no other questions about it, all of them have motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Off to section after ordinance approval, we've got chapter six sixteen, twenty point five A, amending chapter ninety nine point oh two sewer service charges in the Mount Vernon Municipal Code, I think we're up to third reading. Approve second, second reading, proceed to third, you're right.
Thank you. Ben, we haven't gotten anything about this?
Nope.
Unless there's further comments or concerns, I would move approval ordinance six dash sixteen dash twenty twenty five A, amending the sewer rates for the city of Mount Vernon.
Second.
Moving second to move forward, second reading, six sixteen twenty point five A, and if there are questions at times, if you're ready to vote.
Turner?
Yes.
West? Yes. Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance passes, next one is six sixteen twenty twenty five B, amending the U S Highway thirty master plan for the city of Mount Vernon, and that is still purely third and final reading. Move, approval, Paul.
On second.
Moving second, move forth, six sixteen twenty twenty five B, amending the U S Highway thirty master plan, and I saw the comments about that either, so if you're ready to vote on that one.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West? Yes. Engel?
Yes.
And that moves forward, passes. Next is sixteen twenty twenty five C, one sixty five zoning regulations, article seven, section seven ten, accessory buildings to Mount Vernon Municipal Code, motion to approve third and final reading, and if there's any comments?
I would move to approve ordinance six dash sixteen dash twenty twenty five C, chapter one sixty five zoning regulations, approving the final, third and final reading.
Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Craig and Stephanie. Moving second to move forth, six sixteen twenty twenty five C, and if there's no comments or questions, for your board, that, Marsha.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
West? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Now moving on to seven seven twenty twenty five A, chapter ninety one of the wire readers, since it approved the second reading, it proceeds to the third. Comments, questions, any of you guys come up to office?
When?
I'd move approval of ordinance seven dash seven dash twenty twenty five A, amending chapter ninety one, water readers of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code, the second reading.
On second.
Moving second to move forth, seven seven twenty twenty five A.
So.
Ready to vote on that, Marsha, it is yours.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
West? Yes. Turner?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
ordinance passes, moving on to seven seven twenty twenty five B, resource recovery and refuse about the Municipal Code, second reading, proceed to the third. Staff to add, any comments? Is the whole council there?
I'd move approval of ordinance seven dash seven dash twenty twenty five B, amending chapter one oh six, resource recovery and refuge of the Vernon Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
Second reading. I'll second that.
All correct. Moving second to move forth, seven seven twenty twenty five B.
Ben, I just wanted to note, too, these pictures were sent earlier this morning, and garbage is Tuesday, and the citizen noted that these have not been moved in three weeks, so, yeah, that's kind of.
Some of you replied already, but, yeah, the citizens are having that today, this time, but.
I'd be interested in knowing why there's bags there, not in the refuse containers as well. Staff, just saying.
Yeah, I mean. When the garbage came right there.
Yeah, right.
It has been three weeks.
You know what I'm saying?
As I was kind of looking into this, after our meeting last month, no, excuse me, a couple of things, I emailed chief this morning, asking about, well, backing up a little bit. One of the primary concerns from the resident that sent these in seemed to be that they're left in the street, they prevent snowplowing, they prevent, you know, traffic on what is a historic and narrow street, and unless Chris is aware of some other ordinance, there doesn't seem to be any ordinance that addresses stuff just left in the street. And that seems concerning.
Yeah, we have.
Outside of this conversation, 'cause theoretically, I could just put a shed there.
So, no, there are limitations, um, there are limitations on working on your vehicles in the street, there are, there are limitations of things being in the street. Where this gets a little tricky is these are essentially city sanctioned garbage vessels, so it gets a little challenging for us to try under blocking, purely blocking the street, to cite anybody a violation for that reason. Because, to be honest with you, in some situations, the receptacles do have to go in the street the day of.
Mine is the same, you know, if you look at the angle on these, you know, the gravity is gonna put them in the street one way or the other, so you might as well stand them up, mine is the exact same, so.
So trying to craft or, I mean, it would, I'd be honest with you, it would be impossible for staff to, to follow through if we tried to craft an ordinance that says you can only put them on the street for twenty-four hours or something like that. It's just easier to say they have to be moved off the right of way, you know, to a certain point, within twenty-four hours or whatever time frame you come up with. Now, I'm gonna say this, and I probably shouldn't, but, you know, if you go away for the weekend, for instance, my garbage is on, right. If I go away from the weekend and I don't get my garbage put away by the time, so it just goes for like the entire going plus five, there's not a single staff person that I have employed over the weekend that's going to come in and cite anybody over the weekend. So the, probably the bigger concern is the ordinance that's being proposed will kind of be directly correlated to the individuals that have consistently not moved them in. So after, you know, after all of that discussion, it's kind of like the snow ordinance, ninety percent of the people, even those that, you know, violate that ordinance for just a few hours anyway, do not get cited. The individuals that are habitual offenders will, and that's kind of what the ordinance is set up, so.
I did a quick survey today, I rode my bike around the northwest side, I didn't hit every street, but in my travels northwest, it's, as Chris lives on the same side as I do, gets picked up on Fridays, and there were twelve residences that had, they were recycling and trash either in the street or in the right of way. Not a windy day today, so no issues, but boy, when the wind really gets going and those things are empty, they're blowing across the street, you can have property damaged cars, it's, it's really beyond aesthetics, although you do, you do have that factor in there. But it's, yeah, those that never move, I don't understand.
And it may be as simple as, these people don't know that you have to bring them back up, or soon, if this ordinance passes, we'll have to do it, and so you don't punish them for things they don't know, you teach them up and give them a warning or two and see if behavior changes.
And frankly, that's the reason we had to add the language to the ordinance, because there was nothing there that anyone could hang their hat on to tell them to do that.
If you guys don't mind, this may be a learning experience for me too, just kind of to piggyback on this and not to muddy the waters, but I know there's, there's, I don't know if it's a law or an ordinance, I'm not super familiar with all of our ordinances, any debris of any sort that is left on the road that would prohibit through fair traffic, removing, that sort of thing, like, or, or present hazard of some sort, like blowing your grass when you mow out on the street, or, or, or leaves, or sticks, or that sort of thing out in the gutter. I don't know if that sort of ordinance would then piggyback onto objects being left out in the street either. Maybe this wasn't the place to ask that question, I guess, but. But there is an ordinance for that already as well.
So that, that would take care of the miscellaneous.
Stuff that blew out of your recycling.
Blew out of your recycling, or the, you know, nightstand that is free, they put it out in the street versus on parking in the right of way. Being in the street, it is a hazard, there would be, under that ordinance, this ordinance is specific to the receptacles. As I look at the picture, the photo, for everybody to benefit with that, two photos of, this is actually southwest side, as I look at this, the blue containers, recycling and trash will be out of compliance of this ordinance, and the garbage bags and whatever else that is there in the middle would be in violation of the debris in, in the street ordinance.
Yeah, the loose garbage is an easier one to get, to get that off.
The other concern I had with this one, and it isn't specific to this ordinance, but it was in, it was how it came to be on the agenda, in my ten years on council, when there's an issue, generally what would, one of two things would happen. Either we would get an email, I'm hearing this, right, staff sent out an email, I just had a conversation with so and so, so you guys know, or, you know, whatever, or an item would get put on the agenda for a conversation, and then if that was something that we felt needed to be tackled, then an ordinance would be brought forward. Unless I am missing something within the last several meetings, neither of those things happened, and a fully formed ordinance was just placed on the agenda. And my concern there is, there's a lot of discussion that happens prior to identify the actual problem, narrow the scope, figure out what we're trying to accomplish, and then we have the ordinance put together, and secondly, when a fully formed ordinance is put on, it creates, I think in this case, a false sense of momentum, that a lot of those conversations have already happened, and if you look at our voting record, the vast majority of ordinances that make it to the agenda get accepted, because we have had those previous conversations. And so I'm, I wanna make sure, or I want to voice my concern, that this isn't going to be the way these things happen moving forward, that we're gonna have those prior conversations before, you know, a full-on ordinance is placed on the agenda, so we know what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish. So, again, not specific to this one, in general, but just in general, from a process standpoint.
And I, you know, for their matter, there is not, I did ask city hall about this situation, and said I would like to, like for this to be addressed before this ordinance came in front of us, so we'll at least get that.
Understood, and I did miss a meeting also, Scott, and I think you're right, a lot of times, Chris just kind of puts something in front of us to get our opinions and weigh in, and so things aren't entirely a surprise to us, and in this case, in my recollection, we didn't have that, so I think your point is made.
So I will say, the paths, they're, they come to you in three different manners. I do typically try to put in ordinance, what's going to amend some sort of code section in front of you as a discussion item, that's usually when it comes to staff and staff alone, this was actually brought to us by residents and council. So it's a little bit mixed from there, knowing that we rarely, if ever, waive readings, they can get put on there from time to time just without having discussion, but yes, historically, if we are having issues, we would bring something forward, just to kind of give you a heads up. I don't know if it was just the season, or just this, these sort of running, we had a rash of complaint calls, and less than a month's time, from different parts of the community, so it was, it was intriguing how this one evolved. But yes, I mean, we, like I said, I don't wanna sit here and guarantee that it'll happen every time, because there's some, there are some items that get triggered by code that I can't delay, but otherwise, for the most part, we attempt to.
And with this one also, you know, I'm glad that we had, you know, we had three different readings, and we were able to talk about it during the first reading quite extensively, and I, I mean, if someone would have asked if we wanted to, you know, skip the second and third, I would have spoken no from that. This gave us another chance to talk about it tonight, and another chance in two weeks.
Easy.
I do have a question, given the number of calls you've taken, I'm just curious to know if you've ever heard from anyone who said, hey, I need help getting this up, I mean, these things are massive, and if there's an elderly person that can't maneuver it, if there's snow out, and they're trying to wheel it up, and there's issues, or someone gets sick, you know, I think that we too.
So to answer your question, initially when the meat program was rolled out, we did, we had extensive conversation, and we gave quite a bit of leeway to individuals that had expressed that to us, they're not the violators. The unfortunate part is, is every violation that we've found thus far has been students, unfortunately, in rental situations, but yeah, to answer, to answer your question, I talked to a number of individuals when we first rolled this out, and they're like, how am I gonna do this? And we've either connected them with neighbors, or they connected themselves with neighbors, also found out that they're a little bit easier to maneuver than I think what had originally been thought, so.
These are the extra large size, too, there are smaller ones.
Yeah, there are smaller.
I just would hope that if someone.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do, just, just for your own awareness, when we go out and have, we'll have a conversation, we'll do an investigation on a nuisance complaint, and see whether or not it's considered founded or unfounded. In those scenarios, we're not going to go right into court, if you find, you know, an individual that is struggling, we'll, we will do our best to put them in touch with somebody that is willing to help or find alternative solutions.
In my opinion, that's the right thing to do.
They said for the first year and a half, we didn't have, we recruited very little about it, and then just seemed like, for that month, month and a half, almost two more period of this, it's on Peak Street, and then it was on the southwest side, and I was like, oh gosh, you know, at that point, you know, it's becoming a little bit more systematic.
Any other comments about this particular ordinance in the second reading? I think we've had a motion on the floor to approve it, are we ready to vote? I think it's Marsha.
Turner?
Yes.
West? Yes. Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
No.
Motion carries. Moving on to resolution G one, seven twenty one twenty point five A, making a work, construction bid for concrete repair replacement for twenty twenty five sidewalk to repair.
Roger.
This was handed out, let's pick them up, getting them to the meeting.
Yes, the bid tab I handed out at the beginning of the meeting, recommendation is to monitor concrete, and the amount of one hundred twenty one thousand three hundred eighty four dollars.
Is that the gentleman that was here?
I'm not sure what his complaint was, it could have been, just curious.
Do you guys know that?
I don't know.
Okay, I don't. Interesting.
I know.
I know.
Really, the square foot prices were relatively closer with the intersection where they were doing the truncated domes, but seems to be the widest gap in cost.
Again, it's a second concrete bid that is considerably under the engineers' bid, but reading here quickly. Do you have much experience with modern concrete?
We don't, but this is not unusual. You're not typically getting, we deal with, I guess, street pavers, concrete, for the most part. They are not typically bidding these types of projects. We are aware of Midwest concrete because they helped on board. But that was the largest, the largest firm. And you can see, the last time that we did this, I think it was in small for modest seed rapids that that conducted the work in the Northwest quadrant, so.
One time it was a former mate.
Yeah, it, I mean.
Jim, he boarded a bid one time.
It was a.
It's all over the board for this kind of stuff.
I mean, it, these are, these are good bids. This will get, you know, ninety percent of the community knocked out this year.
No issue with the dates because they'll be quick dates and and debates.
Yeah.
What's helpful is it's pretty aggressive, so, good. I've seen some action around town where I'm assuming the homeowners taking on themselves. Which was one of the three options, four options that they had, so that's good to see too.
Unless there's any other questions or concerns, I would approve the bid to modern concrete for one hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Scott Stephanie, move second to move forth, uh, modern concrete on the repair project for the sidewalks. And that is a local work as well, so watch for the others.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Next one is seven twenty-one twenty-five B, seven twenty-five B, project known as the Fourth Street Northwest Reconstruction Project with Midwest concrete. And this is a completed project, correct?
This is completed. Uh, the reason for the delay is on the western portion of this street, we had a question that has to the compaction of the area. So we went through a season and they did a few corrections, so we are comfortable now with both.
If there aren't any other questions, then I would move to approve Resolution seven dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five B, accepting the completed work for Fourth Street Northwest at the amount of three hundred sixty-five thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you, Brandon, is there a second?
Second.
Good, that's Scott, okay. Uh, move second to move forth, Mudows Concrete on the Fourth Street Northwest Reconstruction Project, which is completed. Ready to vote on that, so local, multiple, Marsha?
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to motions for approval, we had claims list that was sent out today to Marsha. Any questions of her or staff about that claims list?
I will move to approve the claims list.
Stephanie, is there a second?
Second.
Great. Move second to approve the claims list. If precision, if all are fair to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. Discussion consideration purchase, uh, purchasing city council chamber meeting microphone units. Council action is needed.
So I don't know if you, you know this, but staff has operated with three microphones over here. And that one completely went out and a couple have disappeared. We don't open this up for a lot of the things besides training, but needless to say, we need to get four. They're expensive, so we do try to keep an eye on them, they are in the locker cabinet, so, and we have cameras down here, so. They just need to be heard at this point.
For microphones, what's the amount here, thirty-two dollars?
That is expensive, yeah.
They're wireless and they talk to the zoom, so.
Press an air pad phone.
Not a bad idea. Yeah, um, I'll move approval of the microphone quote in total of four thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and thirty-five cents.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Move second to move forth the meeting microphone purchases, normal. If you have any other questions, if we're ready to vote on that one, if all are fair to the motion, please say aye.
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 Reposed. Motion carries. Jay Reed, discussion consideration of twenty twenty-five crack ceiling proposal, conclusion construction.
We attempt to crack seal every other year. We haven't for the last three just because of the products that we've been doing and budgeting. But we do need to get back to it. First, I have a thirty, twenty thousand dollar crack seal, you know, considered for five hundred thousand dollar street. So, uh, Kuzner will just, once this is done, give them the go-ahead and they put us on their list, come through and they usually wipe it out in a day or two.
That's right. Didn't we just, didn't business thirty just get reasphalted? It still needs.
The other, the other portion.
Sorry.
The other portion, the west side.
Oh, after the roundabout.
Yeah.
Well, depending on which way you're going.
Yeah, there were.
The west portion, but I will say this, First Street is only three or four years old and this will be the second time that it's cracked sealed. So the the issue with asphalt, just in general, when you're dealing with a base is, you're not renewing the entire street and redoing the base, which is kind of the critical part. Same thing with the Palisades. So these cracks are going to actually form where they were cracked before. Keeping, keeping them sealed and trying to keep moisture from seeping down is the key, but, yeah.
This is deferred vacants.
Yeah, exactly.
With that, I would move approval of the twenty twenty-five crack sealing project, the amount of twenty thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Second that.
That's Scott Craig on that. Move second to move forth, Kuzner, on the twenty twenty-five crack sealing proposal. And then the voice board, if we're ready to vote on that, if all are fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. The motion carries. In the same vein, the air discussion consideration of twenty twenty-five asphalt street repair proposal with Kuzner. Jay, four.
We're actually just going to take advantage of prices here. D Street, most people don't even know where that's.
I had to look it up. I still had to try to figure out what it was looking at.
Street houses.
But, uh, D Street and then, uh, Fourth Ave from second to third, both have areas that are giving way.
North of the gazebo, right? Couple blocks.
The, no, this would be the northwest. Or, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're heading south, I'd be dead at it in the world. And then I I would honestly tell you that thirteen thousand six hundred one is not a number that we typically get. The asphalt projects like this are dependent on oil prices and the number of other things and how hungry the contractors are. It's a rarity that we see repairs like this, something less than a fraction.
The one was right here.
And I'll move to approve. That project amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and one dollars for asphalt street repair on D Street and Fourth Avenue Northwest.
Sounds like a wise decision, Stephanie. Move second to move forth, Kuzner, on the twenty twenty-five asphalt street repair proposal. And if we're ready to vote on that, if you have any further questions, all are fair to that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. Discussion consideration of landing concrete invoice for the uptown empty repairs of the twenty twenty-five streetlight project.
This was actually talked about or discussed during the lighting project because we were going to have issues at the intersection first and first. For those that have been by there, we removed the brick. Then we redone it as part of the the street skate project to begin with, but this project's obviously already been done because we're going to get it done before, uh, here it is.
We took care of a lot of trip hazards.
We did, yeah.
And so the brick was being re, used some forms.
The brick is being housed out at Ryan Road. And I would say the current plan is possibly. That would be up to you when we go through this process. I will tell you that if they propose a sand base, the answer will be absolutely no. That is what is, the issue is right now, so if it's a sand base, it settles. Bricks start to settle with it. If we're going to do a brick like this, typically we will pour concrete and then maybe an asphalt interlayer and then set the bricks on that. Once am I driving up over there?
Separate from this issue, but part of the the uptown lighting. So we've got the new lights and whatnot in, but the old ones are still there. What's the plan?
Lion Road removed those.
Okay.
And then, uh, let's go to the front there, Laurie's been working on, um, replacement posts for the, the signs, basically the street signs, things like that. That will go on.
When they remove those, are we going to be left with square concrete pads? I mean, are they just going to unbolt the pole and and cut away from them?
Pull off, but I'm looking at, um, posts right now for the actual street signs because we need to put those back up. So we're actually going to reuse those bases, so we instructed them to leave those.
Oh, all right, cool, thank you.
Yeah, those poles will be decorative, kind of.
Um, unless there are other questions or concerns, I would move approval of the delayed concrete invoice for the sidewalk repair in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred eighty dollars.
A second.
Stephanie, move second to move forth the delayed concrete invoice for the uptown streetlight project. Any other comments or questions, if we're ready to vote on that one? All are fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. Discussion consideration of V and K invoice, Rachel Street improvements. Council action is needed.
Thirty-four thousand five forty-eight, this is just a continuation of this project. Hope to have our kickoff meeting here in the first parts of August. I would imagine they want to start here, either by the end of August or September.
Obviously, because people aren't seeing anything yet, this is engineering time.
It has been that, I thought it was about some work over there, so it did get people excited because I feel that people in close.
Well, I'll move to approve V and K invoice number five one three seven eight, and and nine, is there a dash?
Dash nine.
Dash nine, sorry, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars.
Second. Stephanie Paul, move second to move forth, Rachel Street improvement with this V and K invoice. And if we're ready to vote on that, if you have any other questions, all are fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries, good luck with your kickoff meeting, let's get there soon. Good to see you out there. Discussion of consideration of tuition reimbursement for Chief Link's. Council action is needed. Getting closer, it's Brian, right?
Sure. Move approval of the tuition reimbursement, the amount of one thousand dollars, one thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Move second to move forth, the tuition reimbursement for Chief Link's. And any comments or questions? Do you think the second to have?
Do you have any comments or questions?
Good, good, great. So motion on the floor to, uh, follow through with the tuition reimbursement as was originally planned. If we're ready to vote on that, all are fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. The motion carries. Discussion of consideration of J E O, J E O invoice on the uptown street skate project.
Thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars, given monthly report.
We've got a detailed report following it, where it's coming from and so on, getting attached to. Any questions of Lori on this one or anybody else on that J E O invoice?
I will say, Laurie, it feels like last time they were, they made a note that they were about sixty percent. I remember seeing that number. At this point in time, where is most of their time being spent?
So it is on the sixty percent plans and we're hoping to have those by September.
Okay.
Maybe August, so, but those sixty percent plans take a little bit of time, so they're still working on the sixty percent plans.
Okay.
But I agree.
Yeah.
But it takes a couple of months to get those done, so.
All right, understood. All right, I will move to approve, uh, to approve J E O invoice number one six two eight one zero.
Second. Craig. Move second to move forth the J E O, J E O invoice on the uptown street skate project. If you have any other comments, if we're ready to vote on that, all are fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. Hook, bridge, lift station. Twelve thousand dollars.
So, just, uh, kind of more FYI, there's not a single piece of equipment in there that is going to get replaced. It's multiple. Alex grew concerned with just one of the pumps in the lift station, so the work has been initiated as a contractor's been through and looked at the inner workings of the lift station. So the estimate right now is somewhere between twelve and sixteen thousand dollars. A failure means bypass, bypass means the NRS involved. I would assume that we cannot do that, so. Sorry, we've initiated the recovery.
Where's, somebody, this is my backyard.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. That's what I was going to ask.
Somebody was there today. You guys did a great job cleaning that out though. Something I would not have wanted to do, but, uh, someone was there today.
Yeah, it always shakes when something happens, still a little suspension.
So anyway.
So are we looking for like a not to exceed?
No, this is more of a heads up because it will, it could become an emergency situation and I really don't know until they start making replacements, just how much we'll have to get done. Right now, this is the best estimate that I can give you.
This is, this is council action is needed, this is to accept the best estimate you can give us, twelve, twelve sixteen right now. Knowing we're planning to get any better and, uh, we don't want to get it into catastrophic range.
Well, I would move approval of the necessary repairs to the overage lift station.
And I would second it as long as, uh, the repairs are communicated well with the neighbors. We're going to have to cut down more trees or anything, I want to know about it.
So amended.
I think it's moved and seconded there and amended. Motion on the floor to continue with the overage lift station project. And if you have any other questions, we'll expect the monthly reports from the landowners here. Ready to vote on that, all are fair to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries. Discussion of consideration of catastrophic leave bank reimbursements. Goes back to Chief Shannon.
So, um, for those that are unaware, when I first came to Mount Vernon, each of the department heads had a contract with the city, renewed on an annual basis. Had never seen anything quite like it in my entire life. So we changed that right away, but prior to that, prior to becoming, when Chief Shannon was appointed chief, it was before they had introduced P T L. And so in order for him not to lose all of the time that he had on the books, they created a catastrophic leave bank, which consequently, um, in conversations with staff, is kind of where we were thinking about, instead of losing P T L, maybe we could create a catastrophic leave with parameters. So there wouldn't be a payout in the future. But there were only three individuals that had this. Mike, the chief prior to Chief Shannon, and then Chief Shannon. Two of the three individuals were actually paid out that time, Chief Shannon, however, was not. In conversation with him, now that the the Cobra insurance extension basically goes until sixty, two or sixty-five? He would, he has asked that instead, in lieu of cutting him a check, that we use his catastrophic leave balance to pay the monthly premium insurance for his Cobra.
Probably preferable for us for a catastrophic basis as well. But twenty-two thousand dollars, that, that can't cover more, that'd be two years for the coverage out of there.
Uh, yeah, it gets him a couple, but it's, you got to remember, the Cobra was only for him as a single. Uh, yeah, it gets him a couple, but it's, you've got to remember, the COVID is only for him as a single employee, so. I didn't do the math, honestly. I want to say the single insurance was like six hundred and more.
That was like five or six.
Forty something. Yeah. Still.
I know, that's what I thought it was, was a thousand.
No, it's a single membership, a single premium, it's like five fifty, five sixty.
I think this is the appropriate approach. He's amenable to it, we're amenable to it. I would move approval of the catastrophic leave bank for former Chief Shannon to pay the COVID premiums.
A second.
Thank you, Paul Scott. Moving second to fourth, the catastrophic, catastrophic leave bank reimbursement for former Chief Shannon. No other questions of staff? If we're ready to move on to that one, all the people on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of naming the Mount Vernon Lisbon Police Department Training Room. Council action is needed.
I did not discuss this with Chief Shannon before. Because I didn't want to deal with the repercussions of anyone after me about it. This was, this actually came from the staff over there for all of the hard work and years of dedication to get a facility specifically for them. I tell people, if you come up to where my office is at currently, all the two of the officers worked out of that small space for a very long time, so. It seemed appropriate for all of this work to commemorate the training room.
Well, the other factor that I credit Chief Shannon on was the, the work that he did bringing the two communities together. To form the Mount Vernon Lisbon Police Department. That was a long time coming. We closed several times, it didn't happen. He was able to really guide the process and make it happen. And I think both communities are better for it. And the other thing I'll say is in all my times at working with, with, as a sergeant and as, as the chief. Training was critical in his mind, and I agree. The field is not an easy field to be in. And I believe this is appropriate recognition of his contributions over the years. I would move approval of naming the training room the Douglas Shannon Training.
Paul.
Oh, a second.
Paul Scott.
And just to clarify, this is the room, for lack of a better, kind of on the front of the building.
Yeah, the windows. Where they had his retirement. You know, good cultural move.
And as Paul's comments, this was came to me from a staff member a year, year and a half ago. So this is not some last second thing here of him. And the level of professionalism, can't say enough about that, that Chief Shannon brought to ours. Police force and instinctiveness to get through the process after many steps forward and then back, as Paul alluded to here. I mean, it'd be easy to throw the towel in that process, but it is, in hindsight, it's like a no brainer. It's a great thing to do and.
Yeah, it's a good towel.
Yeah, okay.
Sometimes timing is everything, right, Paul?
Yes. Got a motion on the floor to, for the naming rights for the training room.
Could have buckled for twenty-two.
No, no. If we're ready to move on to the motion, if you can understand the naming process here. No other questions or comments? And I know, I don't want to open up a bigger issue of naming rights of the general and the civic community here. But let's just do this, deal with this at this point in time as it stands. So, if we're ready to move on to that, all the people on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of Fire Department Training Facility Site Plan. Council action is needed. I was thinking this was going to be four, six cars. There's like twenty-eight out there.
It looks like by the way they're stacked right now. You've actually already given your basic project, this is a whole process of the site plan, but nothing has changed for the, from the original discussion. And I believe they're going to start pouring concrete here yet within the month of August. We're just waiting to get the remaining, remainder of the debris moved to be where they want.
That's all looking better from out there. Still, then, they're, what they had. Found for funding sources primarily?
Yep.
I would move to approve the Fire Department Training Facility Site Plan as the graduate has presented to us.
Thank you, Craig. Second.
Second.
Paul. Moving second to fourth, the Fire Department Training Facility on By Road. If you have no further questions, if we're ready to move on to that, all the people on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of loading zone request for one thirteen Second Avenue Northwest. About fourteen minutes mark, I'm assuming that's right, right behind this?
Yeah, so, um, this is kind of an odd one for us. Normally I would just tell individuals that it's an open alley and that wasn't a feasible project. However, the Board of Adjustment made it a condition of their approval.
The Board of Adjustment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Board of Adjustments hears appeals of zoning related staff decisions. They deal with conditional use permits and then variances. So, most of what you hear about are variances.
So I didn't want to say no.
Well, so they, they're concerned with the brick building that's being renovated for that purpose is. They did not want kids dropped off in the front of the building. So they were hoping that they could park over in the city parking lot, which they can, it's a public park.
Yeah.
Then their concern was that they were crossing the alley to get to the home.
When you say they, and they're concerned.
The Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
So the, the thought was make loading zone back there that parents could just stop. Well, that's an active alley and it's used frequently, so that's why staff might recommend that we make that a loading zone. Outside of the fact that we get these types of requests in the downtown frequently and I pray that you don't do that to me.
Yeah, most in-home childcare, I would assume they have driveways and so people can pull into the driveway and drop their kids off and so on and, or pick them up. Is there no garage area for this house? I haven't looked down, so there is no back entrance.
No. So what would happen is, staff has recommended against you doing this. If you go with staff's recommendation, they have to go back to the Board of Adjustment and either have the Board of Adjustment really like push that condition or discuss a new condition if they would like.
Why were they in front of the Board of Adjustment to begin?
Conditional use permit.
For the.
For the use of the daycare.
Oh, for the use of the daycare, okay.
As a daycare.
Okay, because it's not zoned for that.
So various zoning districts, I, I hate to, to use the word that's not zoned that way because they are, but under certain circumstances, they believe that certain uses should be looked at further and then potential additional conditions placed on them.
Oh, okay.
And that's the mechanism that's there.
And so that's what took them in front of the board to begin with and then they said, yes, but you also.
Some of the conditions they put on there require your approval, this being one of them.
Gotcha, okay.
Doesn't happen very often.
No.
Normally it's just a recommendation, but.
And I just don't like the fact that we're putting a barrier in front of somebody that is trying to fill a gap in our community that we sorely need for childcare. But also when you're strong, there's more recommendation not to do this to you except this precedent, so it's, that's a, that's a symbol.
I think they're going to be fine. I think that you go back to the Board of Adjustment and revisit that particular condition. This is the interesting part is, is zoning Board of Adjustment is considered quadriaducisal, meaning you appoint them, but you don't have any authority over them outside of remanding decisions back. If the city council disagrees with something that Board of Adjustment does, it has to go to district court, so city versus city. Anyway, because they do not require city council permission, we don't know what conditions they're going to place on until they actually go through this process, so.
So just so I, so if, if we were to go against your recommendation and we say yes, go ahead and do a loading zone. That means a portion of the alley designated where if people couldn't park, people couldn't travel through, what would that, what does that look like?
Most likely it would be designated like a fifteen minute loading zone, it would be painted and signed. And then, yes, people could park there.
In, in the alley.
In the, right, right, in the alley, and so then obviously nobody else would be able to really travel through there without.
Yes.
Great difficulty. Okay.
What about city parking spots? If we were not to do that in the alley, do we have the option to make some parking back here? Fifteen minute spots? I'm just wondering if this has been discussed. I'm trying, I'm trying to work around this and, and really look at all the options because I'm fully in support of anyone trying to set up daycare. And I also do know that this isn't a big, big facility, there's not a lot of students there.
So here's my, yeah, so here's my challenge. Trying to make a decision based upon kind of the overall big picture versus an item of need in the community. This is an item of need.
Yeah.
I would tell you this, every business in the Uptown has made a request for us to sign parking in front of their business. So, the challenge for me when it comes to making recommendations to the city council is there's no way to differentiate between the two. So, this is public parking, it's open to any public that wishes to use it as of right now.
When you say this, you mean the lot.
The back parking lot.
Eight or ten, the sponsor, okay, thank you.
Signing them for a specific business or trying to create a fifteen minute designated parking spot. Just open the Pandora's box for me.
Well, and being on, yeah, being on Board of Adjustment for two, two, three years. It, you do encounter things where if you want to allow things, you want to allow for everything, you also have to be very careful because once you allow something, you're setting up precedent. So you set a precedent where you can do a loading zone in working alleys in one place, you may have to say yes for Uptown. So that is my main concern there. It's, it's a very, it's very tough to get a conditional use permit.
What time does city staff typically come in to park?
We're here about ten to seven to four, somewhere here until six or seven at night.
But, but you know, I, I was thinking the same thing and the back area isn't where the staff parks typically. You guys are parking alongside for the most part. So when people are dropping off their children at seven, seven-thirty, there probably won't be spots there where they're picking them up, you guys are already gone.
Yeah, a majority of the individuals are parked here.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, that there might be a way to accommodate in that way, that it's not hindering city staff.
There are other businesses that park back here though, so that would be something to take into consideration. Because that lot's pretty full usually.
Morning drop off, I don't think will be as big of an issue.
I don't think it'll look like morning drop off.
Pickup in the evening.
Harder.
Could be.
I think big construction starts at the old firehouse.
Is the facility open yet?
No.
Okay.
They just put their fencing in today.
Okay.
Well, it's very nice.
But does.
Yeah.
It is nice though.
And I think we can, we can see how things go without doing, in my opinion, without the need to do, you know, to make a special accommodation. I think it doesn't, we couldn't, in the future, we couldn't make another consideration.
Something that I, on my end anyway, to think about like snowmobile in the wintertime, like how would that present challenges for, for our staff? With the future possibility of business at the old fire station. The resident that lives in the corner over here that usually accesses that in and out, I just, it's, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. And I'm not, I'm on the fence either way with this whole thing, but.
But it's kind of doubtful the business in the old fire station would be coming in at that early in the morning.
No, like I said, if you were, if you were just talking about drop off in the morning, I don't think that would be a big of a deal. My concern really is pickup, because that could be anywhere from four to six o'clock. And this parking lot does actually see quite a bit of action, especially Thursday through Saturday. For people coming uptown.
Then the business will be open.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, and as much as, like I said, as much as I would like.
Yeah, I've had to walk my girls into, you know, get out of the car with them, walk them into plenty of daycares. This is a workable project, so.
Carrying them around sometimes.
Right, nah, I just let them get where I love them. Having, unless there are other questions or concerns, I would, I don't even know how to phrase this.
I'm just basically recommending against the designation.
Recommending against the designation of a loading zone for one thirteen Second Avenue Northwest.
Okay. Scott and Paul. Question, do you get the wording of that? So motion on the floor, that's a great loading zone request for one thirteen Second Avenue Northwest, business meeting in there. If no further questions, all the people on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
And Eldon, thank you for speaking up because sometimes we're not always thinking about stuff like you are and that's why you're here, so.
So outside of you.
Yes.
Very important, so.
Yep.
Discussion and consideration of our three firms, selection for the CDG SAD grant application.
So three firms were interviewed by the committee made up of business owners that would take advantage of the grant and city staff. Jill and Lee were the two city representatives that were part of during the process. Their recommendation to me was MGA Architects.
Was there a last project in our, in town, the police station?
That's one that you guys mentioned.
And.
Yes.
Census on that was fairly positive, because that was a.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I will be honest with you, all, all three firms that they interviewed, when they asked me, I said I would be happy with all three of them. I personally worked with two of the three.
Good to see a, a former partner developer.
To Ms. Jewel's point from before, as part of this application and the approval process and this whole, are they, is there a formalized option for them working directly with historic preservation to try and not have the things that we've seen happen?
So, yes, there's actually a number of historical things including. She'll, what's that acronym, state historic preservation.
Oh my gosh, don't ask.
State Historic Preservation, basically an application, so there's a number of things because it's federal money that they'll have to go through on top of the local.
But they'll handle it?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so we're not going to put it on.
And it's a two-phase project. First phase that we're in currently is to basically try and secure the funding. And then we move into second phase, which would involve all the parties. And that's really why the review committee was made up of business owners that would potentially take, take on this project and wanted them to feel comfortable with whoever the architect was that was going to be working with them.
Recommendation for Martin Marner Associates to be involved with CDG SAD, the adaptation grant application. There's a solid number of how many partners businesses, wasn't there a need to have a. Is there a solid number of how many partners, businesses, was there a need to have at least?
There was at least six, I believe, but our number was closer to twelve or thirteen, if I remember correctly.
Still a solid number.
Yeah.
There were sixteen businesses that were interested in, who have expressed interest, but the magic number, they say, is like eight to ten of businesses is like the perfect kind of number to move forward with the project. And some businesses will fall in and out of that process as we go along. Sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
Involved with that project, yeah.
Unless there are questions or concerns, I would approve of the awarding of NGA architects for the CDVG Architect Review Committee recommendations.
One second.
Scott and Stephanie. Makes sure the committee, for a wanted-to process, is make a tough choice on the three good providers. Motion on the floor to approve Martin Marner Associates, seconded. Ready to vote on it, all the people in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Our reports to be filed, the hometown police reports. Any questions, Chief Blanks?
If you'd add a comment.
My only comment was, I would, this was the first time I could remember in a while where we had an accident in the roundabout. We really have, there have been so few.
There's, we have, we have one or two a month.
I just remember how many we used to have, and the redesign seems to have really.
We had, we had a number of sideswiped involving heavy trucks.
Yeah.
That we, that we don't see quite as many. We still haven't tackled the visibility aspect to that, and it still is a race course. Who can get up there and try and pass somebody?
The good news, our drivers end up spending a lot of time on roundabouts. Firsthand knowledge from skill.
I did come close, someone turned left on it. Anything else in the first report?
Chief, moving on to public works, Mr. Dennis.
I don't know if anybody appreciated it. I was still trying to figure out.
Yeah, I was like, is this a, is this a foot scale?
Yes, yes.
But we don't know what size foot that is, that doesn't help us at all.
It's not very big. That's a lot bigger than my foot.
I know, I did, I did want to point out, like, if you look at all of the pictures from a crew size standpoint.
Shoe size?
That way. You know, from planting to concrete, we're heavy, heavy equipment, tree removal. We have a small crew and we get a lot of stuff done.
A wide variety.
Yeah. The door by the LBC and the planters on the patio. I assume that's Jane and Hertha, but just, you know, like everything else, they put their hands on it, so. And I could tell the scale of them without.
Without a foot.
I thought you'd show off the stand.
That's what I, yeah, that was the other issue.
It really was trying to show a big.
Yeah, I do know that.
It was large.
Assuming there's no further critique about the public works.
Nothing to add.
All you can say, look for the details.
Yeah. Matt may not have anything to add, but I want to add huge congratulations for the success of Parages and the flexibility with how Friday kind of just went longers. And to, I don't know if that plan was in place prior, or if that was a Hail Mary, but an excellent job all around on that.
But I'm thinking you might have had more people that saw the drum show that had planned to see it, even on Friday. And it was, it was, I just heard nothing but positive about it.
That's what we, that's what we do best. That Friday evening event that LBC hosts, I mean, that was such a win when you started that a few years ago. It's too bad you couldn't do it.
Yeah, we had to make a decision early because the inflatable company was going to charge me twenty-one hundred dollars if they showed up, and I didn't know if anybody was going to come. So we had some tough decisions to make, but I think we made the right decisions based on the weather, so.
And with the first-time director too, you know, to be happy to Jesse, having to do all the, make those decisions, make those decisions.
And I feel like it was also communicated well. And maybe that's partly because you made it early.
Yeah.
But the communication was very good too.
That was a key in our decision, was to make sure everybody knew what was going on, so, yeah, thank you.
Riley would have come. I'm just saying, she would have still come.
And the fourth report that's now listed in the agenda was Craig mentioned, was the library report from Shaverland.
It sounds like she's having really, really good attendance in some of the programs.
Yes.
Yes.
We have reading and discussion.
No discussion items, reports of Mayor, Council Administrator. The only thing I was going to mention as far as Mayor's report is a lot of ribbon cuttings. All with the Fairway one last week, Uptown Lighting Project, was a couple days ago. Southeast Land is doing one out at the, please, Bay Church, I think?
Yeah, Community Garden.
Community Garden, yeah, right, sure. And Cottonwood Apartments, I guess that's how you establish here, maybe have a big deal.
I thought, I thought those units in Cottonwood were sold out with the waiting list. Why did they put a sign up here now leased?
No, what we had indicated before, that the number of people that we were sending to them, the waiting list had to be extensive. But not everybody would qualify either. So they have to go through a process of making sure the income guidelines are correct and all of that, so. There's plenty of interest.
Good. Enter openings, and conduct you to the floor.
Excellent, yes.
That's why I have scenarios reports and council reports. Moving forward.
I just say that the Mount Vernon Lisbon Childcare Solutions Group met last week. We're in the process of putting together an eighteen-month plan. And we're, we have a draft of that, we're going to try to finalize that in the month of August so that we can begin implementation of the strategies beginning after Labor Day. But there are four subcommittees, there's the Planning and Community Stakeholder Subcommittee, which I chair, there's Research Subcommittee that includes data from national, state, county, that helps inform decision-making for us. There's an Outreach and Fundraising Subcommittee, probably happens to share that one. And then there is a Community Investment Subcommittee that deals with our finances and our award distributions.
Thank you, Craig. Any else, any comments? Anyone else needs to come before this council this time? Otherwise, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.